This program is sponsored by Medical Arts Hearing Instruments. Fifty-two West Street in Leominster. Locally and authentically providing better hearing and quality of life since nineteen seventy-eight. WWW dot do not shout dot com.
Request permission to install a new underground conduit system on Tansio Road, starting at utility pole number fourteen, excavating to place one four-inch PVC conduit, hundred seventy feet plus or minus the utility pole number thirteen. Representative from Comcast, if you would like to give us an update on exactly what your plan is there?
Yes, good evening. My name is Dave Prowelling from Comcast. Basically, we're going to be installing that conduit from pole fourteen to thirteen on Tansio Road. Reason being, we're going underground there is there's a New England power transition lines and there's not enough room for Comcast to attach to the poles. Therefore, we need to do an underground dip there to get back up onto the pole line.
Are you doing the underground singly, or just you? Or is anybody else?
Yeah.
Any, no other utilities?
Not just Comcast.
Okay, no other utilities are joining?
No.
Is this for a particular business?
There already is. I'm sorry?
Is this for a particular business?
Yes, once we do that underground dip and get to the pole, we will be bringing the service to number two-hundred Tansio Road.
Okay. And is that, is that a project that's being built now?
Um, not until we get this underground piece.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Is there any more you'd like to add to that?
Nope, that should be it.
All right. I'll go to members of my committee. Mr. President, if anybody would be, has any questions for Dave?
Mr. President, I have a question. Counselor Cormier?
Yes, very well, go ahead.
Uh, Dave, I'm sorry, and I didn't catch your last name, so I don't mean to be so informal. Can you tell me how long a project, a project like this normally takes?
Uh, it's only a hundred and seventy feet of digging off the, uh, off the grass, off the shoulder of the road and the grass. We'll be able to do this in one day.
Okay, great. And so no interference with any kind of traffic or any, anything in and out of there?
Not at all.
Excellent. Thank you.
I'll start, Counselor.
I don't have any other questions.
Okay. Uh, anybody else have any questions? Any of the other counselors have any questions? If not, is there somebody that had something I didn't get to?
No, sorry, Claire, I just said no.
Oh, okay, thanks. Um, let's go to the public. Is there anyone listening in that wishes to speak in support of this petition? Again, is there anyone who wishes to speak in support? For the third and final time, is there anyone who wishes to speak in support? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? Again, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? For the third and final time, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? If not, Mr. President, I'll declare the hearing closed.
Very well, thank you, Counselor Frida. Um, we'll move on to the public forum. The public forum is an opportunity for any member of the audience to speak on a matter specifically listed on the council agenda. Speakers will be asked to come to the microphone, in this case, the telephone, and state their formal name and address, along with identifying the specific item or items they wish to address. Each speaker is respectfully asked to keep their comments within a two-minute timeframe. The council will not be responding or answering any questions, however, at the discretion of the council president, clarification may be given. Is there any member of the public that wishes to address the city council in the public forum? The second time, is there any member of the public wishes to address the city council in the public forum? And the third and final time, is there any member of the public that wishes to address the council in the public forum? Hearing none, I will declare the public forum closed. We're about two minutes away from opening the meeting. So, we're on track so far. Oh, there's Counselor Columbia's, um, clock. Took her a minute early, David.
She does.
According to Apple, at least. Would you all please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Thank you very much. Take a roll call of the counselors in attendance, starting with Counselor Frida.
Right here.
Counselor Dombrowski.
Present.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr.
Present.
Counselor Feckley. Counselor Feckley?
Present, present.
Counselor, Counselor Angelini?
Present.
Counselor Arndinger?
Present.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Present.
Counselor David Cormier?
Present.
All nine counselors are recorded as present. Moving on to approval of the records, does the chairwoman of records have a report?
Yes, Mr. President, I have the minutes of the regular city council meetings of May eleventh, twenty twenty, and May twenty-sixth, twenty twenty, and I find them to be in order and after they be placed on file.
Thank you very much. Moving on to communications from the mayor, starting with appointments.
A measure confirming the mayor's reappointment of Nancy King to the Cultural Commission, term to expire four fifteen, twenty twenty-three.
The appointment is referred to the chairwoman of Ways and Means.
Thank you. Uh, this will be given regular course, as it is a reappointment, no interview is necessary.
Very well. Um, next measure, please.
A measure confirming the mayor's reappointment of Elizabeth Raymond to the Cultural Commission, term to expire four fifteen, twenty twenty-three.
The reappointment of Elizabeth Raymond is referred to the chairwoman of Ways and Means.
Mr. President, again, regular course, and it is a reappointment, so no interview necessary.
Very well. Um, next measure, please, Pam Clerk.
A measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Susan Shelton to the Library Board of Trustees, term to expire four fifteen, twenty twenty-three.
The appointment of Susan Shelton is referred to the chairwoman of Ways and Means.
Thank you. A regular course, and I will ask the city clerk to invite Ms. Shelton to our next meeting for a, an interview.
Okay.
Very well, she's well-known to us all, but I'm sure she would be happy to, uh, say hello at our next meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, moving on to communications, starting with C sixty-seven.
C sixty-seven, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor. Relative to the appropriation of seventy-one thousand four hundred ninety-two dollars be made to the cemetery salary and wages account, the same amount to be transferred from the cemetery perpetual care income account. Regarding cemetery labor, thirty-eight thousand four hundred forty-six dollars. Cemetery part-time, fifteen thousand five hundred eighty-five dollars. Cemetery clerical, seventeen thousand four hundred sixty-one dollars. Totalling the allotted amount of seventy-one thousand four hundred ninety-two dollars.
C sixty-seven is referred to the chairman of finance.
Thank you, Mr. President, first time on the calendar, regular course.
Very well, C sixty-seven is given regular course. C sixty-eight.
C sixty-eight, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor. Relative to the appropriation of forty-five thousand dollars be made to the library expense account, the same amount to be transferred from the library state aid account regarding library books.
C sixty-eight is referred to the chairman of finance.
Once again, Mr. President, first time on the calendar, regular course.
Very well, C sixty-eight is given regular course. C sixty-nine.
C sixty-nine, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor. Relative to the appropriation of seventy-three thousand eighty dollars be made to the cemetery capital outlay expense account, the same amount to be transferred from the cemetery sale of lots fund regarding a hundred forty-four units.
Um, C sixty-nine is referred to the chairman of finance.
First time on the calendar, Mr. President, regular course.
Very well, C sixty-nine is given regular course. Moving on to C seventy.
C seventy, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor. Relative to the appropriation of four hundred thousand dollars be made to the pension expense account, the same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund.
C seventy is referred to the chairman of finance.
Regular course.
Very well, C seventy is given regular course. C seventy-one.
C seventy-one, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor. Request that the fiscal year twenty twenty-one water department budget, which totals five million eight hundred seventy-six thousand eight hundred sixty-five dollars, be adopted as listed, the same amount to be raised as authorized by Massachusetts, Massachusetts General Law, chapter forty-four, section fifty-three E, regarding attachment fiscal year twenty twenty-one water department budget.
C seventy-one is referred to the chairman of finance.
Thank you, Mr. President, regular course, and I would like to establish a public hearing for June twenty-second, twenty, at six fifty-one PM.
Very well. Um, well, I guess we'll vote on that now. Um, unless we take, uh, we'll vote on it now. All right, so, um, the, uh, you heard the request to, um, give C seventy-one regular course and set a, uh, hearing date of June twenty-seventh, twenty-second, six fifty-one. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Counselor Frida?
Yay.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Yay.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Counselor Feckley?
Yay.
Counselor Angelini?
Yay.
Counselor Arndinger?
Yay.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Counselor David Cormier?
Yay.
Counselor David Cormier?
Yay.
And I will be recorded as yay, uh, by a vote of nine to nine to zero. C seventy-one is given regular course with a hearing date of June twenty-second at six fifty-one PM. Moving on to C seventy-two.
C seventy-two, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor. Request that the fiscal year twenty twenty-one sewer department budget, which totals five million five hundred eleven thousand five hundred forty-nine dollars, be adopted as listed, the same amount to be raised as authorized by Massachusetts General Law, chapter forty-four, section fifty-three.
Uh, C seventy-two is referred to the chairman of finance.
Uh, the regular course, Mr. President, and I'd like to establish a public hearing for June twenty-second, twenty twenty, at six fifty-two PM.
Heard the recommendation of the chairman of finance to, uh, provide, give the C seventy-two regular course, establishing a hearing of June twenty-second at six fifty-two PM. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Counselor Frida?
Yay.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Yay.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Counselor Feckley?
Yay.
Counselor Angelini?
Yay.
Counselor Arndinger?
Yay.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Counselor David Cormier?
Yay.
And I shall be recorded as yay by a vote of nine to zero. C seventy-two is given further time with a public hearing date established as June twenty-second at six fifty-two PM. Moving on to C seventy-three.
C seventy-three, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor. Relative to the appropriation of one hundred thousand dollars be made to the Gallagher Building salary and wages account, the same amount to be transferred from the Gallagher Building revolving fund regarding fiscal year twenty twenty-one operating expenses.
C seventy-three is referred to the chairman of finance.
First time on the calendar, Mr. President, regular course.
Very well, C seventy-three is given regular course. Moving on to C seventy-four.
C seventy-four, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor. Request that the fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget, which totals one hundred thirty-three million four hundred fifty-seven thousand six hundred twenty-two dollars, be adopted, the same amount to be raised by fiscal year twenty twenty-one revenue.
Very well, C seventy-four is referred to the chairman of finance.
First time on the president, on the calendar, Mr. President, regular course, and I'd like to establish a public hearing for June twenty-second, twenty twenty, at six fifty-three PM.
You heard the recommendation of the chairman of finance to give C seventy-four regular course and establish a public hearing on June twenty-second at six fifty-three PM. Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, Mr. President, I have a question.
Yes.
Um, I've sent a couple of emails to the finance chair through you, um, asking that we have all department heads come down, if we do involve cutting and, uh, the end, I'd like to know what all the priorities are for the department heads, and I don't have a response to that, and I was just curious as to, you know, what the decision was.
Um, through the chair, uh, to the, to the, uh, at large council, I'll be setting up budget hearings under new business, and the finance committee will decide who we're going to have down, and we'll take, you know, suggestions as well.
Okay.
So you don't know if you can have everybody down then?
It's unlikely, but that's up to the other members of the finance committee.
All right, any other questions? I, I would add editorially as well that, of course, at the public hearing on June twenty-second, six fifty-three, anybody can participate, anybody interested, so. Um, that being said, any, any additional discussion? Okay, Counselor Frida?
Yay.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Hey.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay, yay.
Counselor Feckley?
Yay, yay.
Counselor Angelini?
Yay, yay.
Counselor Arndinger?
Yay.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Yay, yay.
Counselor David Cormier?
Yay.
And I shall be recorded as yay by a vote of nine to zero. C seventy-four is given further time with a public hearing established on June twenty-second at six fifty-three PM. Moving on to C fifty, C seventy-five.
C seventy-five, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor. Request that the approval of the CDBG budget action plan for year forty-six. I just wanted to note, I accidentally assigned it to finance, but it should go to Ways and Means.
Okay, we will refer that to the chairwoman of Ways and Means.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, this will be given regular course, and as we have historically done, since I have been, uh, Ways and Means chair, we have invited, um, Ms. Wendy Weeks down, so that if we had any questions, she could address them. So I would ask the clerk if she could ask, um, Ms. Weeks if she could join us at the next meeting.
Sure.
Okay, that can be done. Did you want to establish a hearing date for this, Madam Chairwoman?
Um, I don't recall that we had one. I, I, I'm going to defer to the clerk on that.
Do we need a, do we need?
Go ahead, Mark.
Do we need a public hearing on this?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, I am thinking out loud, they, they can get this in timely if we approve it at our next meeting. Um, however, it, we, maybe we should take this up when the chair of finance sets his, um, committee hearings. I was giving some thought to letting them come in for their public hearing and having a special meeting the same night that we have one of the chair of finances' public hearings to get this done with, for them. It'll serve a couple purposes. It'll take it, it'll take it off the twenty-second, which we'll have plenty to, to deal with, of course. And it'll also give the, uh, CDBG people, or Ellen Racine, a little bit extra time, uh, to, uh, work with. Um, if that's not objectionable to the chairwoman of Ways and Means, why don't we establish, why don't we talk about a public hearing date in a special meeting, perhaps, when we, um, get to the chair of finances' public hearing dates?
Okay, that makes sense to me.
All right, very well. So we'll, for now, we'll give it regular course, and we'll move on to petitions, first time on the agenda, starting with sixty-six dash twenty.
Mr. President, could I just add, as a member of Ways and Means?
Sure, of course.
Um, CDBG funding is the mayor's program. They don't even really have to approve it. I mean, we could deny it, it wouldn't matter. It's his program to do what he wants with, a federal program for mayors, so, um, I mean, it's informative for us and we approve it, but it's not mandatory?
Well, that's even, uh, strengthens my, uh, argument that maybe it would be a better thing to do it on one of the, I think it isn't going to be too lengthy, but we can get it done on one of the same nights that, uh, the finance chair is conducting hearings on the budget. We won't have to worry about it on the twenty-second. I think it, and it gives, like I said, it gives, um, Ms. Racine a little bit extra time to work with. All right, thank you, thank you for that comment, Counselor Frida. Um, unless there's anything else, we can move on to sixty-six dash twenty.
Sixty-six dash twenty. Comcast of Massachusetts Three Incorporated Inc. Request permission to install a new underground conduit to service number one Main Street, Water Street, starting at utility pole number three, excavating to place two four-inch PVC conduits, two hundred and ninety-five feet plus or minus, to a proposed twenty-four inch by thirty-six inch vault. From the newly placed vault, continuing with the excavation with two four-inch PVC conduits, three hundred and fifty-five feet plus or minus, to a proposed twenty-four inch by thirty-six inch vault located on Mechanic Street. From the newly placed vault, conduit will continue three feet plus or minus and on to the property of one Main Street. In addition, two four-inch PVC conduits will be dubbed out to the vault for a future takeoff.
Okay, sixty-six dash twenty is referred to the chairwoman of public service.
Yes, Mr. President, regular course, with, um, we need to establish a public hearing for June twenty-second at six fifty-four PM.
Um, Madam Chairwoman, I'm just wondering, um, and Madam Clerk, would it make more sense to establish this hearing at six fifty, as opposed to six fifty-four, so it comes before all of the budget hearings, as opposed to after all the budget hearings?
I think that would be fine, Mr. Comcast.
I, I got an dissent, I think, from, uh, the clerk, but Counselor Frida, are you okay with that?
That's, I'm fine with that.
All right, I think it makes, I don't think we want to keep them around through all that. All right, so the request would be to establish a public hearing on June twenty-second at six fifty PM. Um, any further discussion? Hearing none. I'll do it by roll call. Counselor Frida?
Yay.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Yay.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay, yay.
Counselor Feckley?
Yay, yay.
Counselor Arndinger?
Yay.
Counselor Angelini?
Yay.
Skipped him. Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Counselor David Cormier?
Yay.
And I'll be recorded as yay by a vote of nine to zero. Sixty-six dash twenty is given regular course and is established a hearing, public hearing on June twenty-second at six fifty PM. Okay, moving on to matters before the city council, starting with the City of Leominster financial report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. Um, we, the fiscal year, um, twenty twenty, with nineteen million eight hundred ninety thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars and twenty-five cents in the stabilization fund, to date, we have gained interest of two hundred and forty thousand three hundred and seventy-seven dollars and sixty-seven cents. Um, provided, um, all of the items that are on the agenda for tonight's meeting and the one that is on the agenda for the first time tonight, but will be voted on at the next meeting, are approved, we will have spent five million nine hundred and fifty-eight thousand four hundred and thirty-six dollars and twelve cents, leaving us with a balance of fourteen million one hundred and seventy-two thousand seven hundred and twenty-one dollars and eighty cents. And I did talk to John Richard today, um, there still is, uh, uh, no free cash that has been certified. He has indicated to me that, um, it is now with the state and it's waiting for auditors, as he indicated to me, and he has, uh, told me that, you know, they are working remotely, they are still not in their offices. Um, so, you know, unfortunately, there could be, uh, some kind of an additional hang-up there as well, so there is no date yet, um, as to when our free cash, um, as of, as of right now, and that is a financial report.
Any questions?
Uh, I have a question, Mr. President.
Yes, Counselor Frida.
Do we know why it took so long to get free cash into the state? Do we have any idea?
I, through, through the chair, the chair, I, all I have gotten was the same thing that I have indicated at every other meeting, that the comptroller has been telling me, he's been working on it, he's been working on it, he's been working on it. That's all I know about it. So, un, unfortunately, you know, with the, the pandemic situation and, and things, you know, state agencies being closed down, people working remotely, you know, now we have an additional hang-up there, so unfortunately, I, I don't have any other answers besides, you know, besides that.
We, we didn't have a pandemic last year, and I just, I'd like to point out something. Um, I was throwing things out this weekend, trying to clear out some of these old papers, and I came across one, February second, two thousand fourteen, and the headline on the front page of the Sentinel is "Show Us The Money." And it's Counselor Savatelli yelling about free cash, and you following up on his comments about free cash and how dangerous it is not to have it so late, and that was February second. And you clearly state that this year's late certification is raising concerns, but there isn't a time in recent memory the city spent all this free cash, and in case something happens, late-arriving free cash is a reason to worry. So, uh, I know we have, we're a little cavalier about it, but we're in June, and this is a concern six years ago in February. So, I, I just wanted to address that because now we're chair of finance, you know, you were on the finance committee with the, with the Counselor Savatelli at the time, now he's the chair, you still can't get any answers six years later. So I, I think the problem is this is that's.
Have you spoken to the mayor? Have you spoken to the mayor?
I don't need to speak to the mayor. I, I don't need to go to finance chair. This is taxpayer dollars, and, and they deserve to know where the, where the money is. This is my, this is my opinion.
Well, Claire, you're, you obviously are entitled to your opinion. Um, it is what it is. We don't, we obviously don't certify free cash as a city council.
I understand that.
Nor do we have any direct control over the, over the comptroller.
No, but there should be a little bit of concern about getting it.
Well, the, the, the fact that, that we don't have concrete answers is that we, you know, we haven't maybe been provided them, and we can all have concerns. I mean, all, every councilor can contact the comptroller and ask the question. So, this year, it is a little, is a little bit different of a wrinkle, and under the governor's legislation, we can access free cash that's not certified, not that we necessarily have to, but it's a little different this year than it has been in the past. Um, but, you know, look, the, the money's going to be available at some point, one way or the other. So, I understand your concerns, and I understand you echoing them at each meeting, but the council, the chairman of finance is doing what he can do, like any other councilor can do about this particular matter, so.
I would strongly, I would strongly suggest that council is look at, uh, council responsibilities under the Department of Local Services and Department of Revenue.
Well, look at.
I'm done. I'm done, I'm good.
Okay, very well. Okay, very well. You know, you, you're, you're one of us too, so I understand. So not, not always an easy job.
I've been trying to get this across, and I'm not getting anywhere.
What, what have you done with the administration?
There's nothing to do with the administration.
What have, what have you done with any member of the, Mayor, Chair, or any member of his finance team? What have you done?
It, it, there isn't anything to do. If we don't have a full Council that's gonna support anything, it's not true.
Well, you're, you're, you're suggesting, you're suggesting that every one of these Councils has some responsibility for this free cash. What have you done?
It, it is nothing to do, uh, we're outside of really finding out why it hasn't been done, why the, why the City Council doesn't have it, and why the Council doesn't ask any questions about pushing to get it. This is every year, it's the same thing, this isn't right.
The Counselor clearly indicated that he asked questions of the Comptroller, who is the person with the most information about this. I'm gonna renew my question. What have you done to find out any information about the certification of free cash?
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not the Chairperson of Finance. I can find out.
You just told me two minutes ago, you just told me two minutes ago that we all have a responsibility as City Councils to oversee the city's finances. What have you done as a long-term City Councilor at large to ascertain the status of free cash?
You can, you can try to turn it back on me, Mr. President, that's fine if you want to.
I'm not turning it back on you any more than any other member of the Council. We're all, we're all in the same place.
That's right, and we all.
So, you know, I'm not turning it back on you, but I'm not gonna allow it to be turned back on any other Councilor down here, okay?
That's good, that's fine.
Just to be clear, all right?
When it look at responsibilities, we can look at them. Thank you.
I, I will not allow you to make statements that don't have any particular purpose or mean anything, or is just a, a, essentially an insult to everybody else down here. If you want to work co-op- cooperatively, I am sure every member of this Council will work cooperatively with you. If you want to make jibes and jibs and, and all kinds of insults, then just continue, because it's getting you nowhere, okay? And I'm not gonna stand for it.
I don't, I don't consider my concerns a public insult, so.
Your last comment, your last comment I'm talking about, I'm not talking about the discussion before it, I'm talking about the last comment. I'm not gonna let that kind of stuff stand. Simple as that. Are you finished?
That, that's fine, I've been done for a while. The other one is.
Okay, very well. Very well. We'll move on to C sixty-four.
B dash sixty, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests an appropriation of three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars be made to the Fire Department Capital Outlay Expense Account, the same amount to be transferred from the Stabilization Fund. Uh, Mr. President, um, we got a email, um, we got a communication, I got it through email, uh, from the Fire Chief. Fire Department is requesting the sum of three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars for the purchase of a new ambulance, replacing Rescue Two. The current Rescue Two will be moved into reserve status, which has a two thousand sixteen chassis with a two thousand and eight retrofitted, um, patient compartment. Um, so basically, what they're looking to do is, is, uh, get a new ambulance, um, we all know that they are constantly on the go, they take a lot of abuse and a lot of wear and tear, they might not have a ton of miles, but it's certainly all city and a lot of, uh, you know, at, at the scenes of accidents and hospital emergency rooms and whatnot, uh, so they want to keep up with the fleet. But we don't have any problems with having, uh, equipment out of service in a very, very busy city, um, with, you know, a, a larger elderly population as well. So, uh, I will check with members of the committee, but it will be my recommendation that we grant C dash.
Very well. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, Counselor Pauline Cormier?
I, I agree, I strongly support this.
And Counselor Angelini?
Absolutely, I'm in favor of, uh, passing this.
Okay.
And my support.
Thank you very much, Counselor Angelini. You've heard the EMS recommendation of Finance to grant C dash sixty-four, is any discussion? Hearing none, this will be by roll call, Counsel Frida?
Reluctantly out of stabilization, but I realize the importance of the, of the expenditure, I support it.
Very well, Counselor Dombrowski?
Yay.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Counselor Feckley?
Yay.
Counselor Angelini?
Yay.
Counselor Arndinger? Counsel Arndinger?
Yay.
Counselor, uh, Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Counselor David Cormier?
Yay.
That shall be recorded as yay by a vote of nine to zero. C sixty-four is granted, does the Chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President, ordered that the sum of three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars be appropriated to the Fire Department Capital Outlay Expense Account, the same amount be transferred from the Stabilization Fund. Move for the adoption of the order.
Counsel Frida?
Yay.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Yay.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Counselor Feckley?
Yay.
Counselor Angelini?
Yay.
Counselor Arndinger?
Yay.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Counselor David Cormier?
Yay.
And I shall be recorded as yay by a vote of nine to zero, the order is adopted. Moving on to C sixty-five.
C dash sixty-five, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requested the appropriation of seventy thousand dollars be made to the Fire Department Out, like Fire Department Capital Outlay Expense Account, the same amount be, to be transferred to the Stabilization Fund. Uh, we do have a communication here from the Fire Chief, uh, Robbie Sidlo, and I can read it very quickly. Um, I respectfully request the appropriation of seventy thousand dollars for capital expenditure, expenses to be used for emergency upgrades and renovations at Stations Two and Three. In response to COVID-nineteen, uh, needed living quarters upgrades and department operations, the money will be used to construct, uh, bedrooms to unisex bathrooms and day room on the second floor of Stations Three. Um, and Two will be a unisex bathroom upgrade, um, bedrooms, watchroom, and HVAC at Station Three. I have already used the money earmarked to complete the rear deck at Headquarters to start the project at Station Three. We have been able to construct six bedrooms, install a new fire alarm system for the entire building, upgrade old electrical wiring on the second floor, and plan to install a new second floor HVAC. Thirty-five thousand dollars of this appropriation be used to reimburse the Headquarters account. Following our meeting, we were able to, record time, complete this work, allowing us to complete these renovations, will prepare Fire Department for another outbreak of COVID-nineteen next winter with the ability to separate our department into three units per shift. Additional bathrooms, bedrooms, and HVAC provides the ability to decon distance and cohabitate in a clean, safe environment. This also accomplishes the needed upgrade and additional living quarters that are requested in the Department's annual report, the long-term planning. Thank you for consideration. Um, so basically, you know, as, as stated, I think it's pretty self-explanatory, I had a little time, hard time reading it off my phone. Um, you know, these are much-needed upgrades. I think that, uh, the Department certainly learned, uh, something, you know, they had a few, um, you know, deficiencies in, in their operation during such a time, but they've learned from it and they're gonna fix it so we can move forward, and if this happens again, we'll be better positioned to, uh, you know, to keep personnel safe. So I'll check with members of my committee, and I would, uh, I would request that we grant C dash sixty-five, and if you can, Mr. President, check with members of the Finance Committee.
Sure, sure, Mr. President, I'd be happy to, Mr. Chairman rather. Counselor Cormier?
I'm in full agreement.
And Counselor Angelini?
I would also agree, I think it's a wise use, uh, of the funds, and, uh, uh, it's very smart to get, get ahead of a potential second round of COVID, we will be well positioned for it.
Thank you, Counselor. Um, you've heard the EMS recommendation of Finance to grant C dash sixty-five, is there any discussion?
Uh, I have a question.
Yes.
For the Finance Chair. Do we know if the, uh, why the Mayor is not using COVID funding, or is he using COVID funding for this?
Um, that, that I do not know, sir. Um, I don't know if it's, if it, I, I will have to ask if it's gonna sit and reimbursed by the government, um, because it is a, you know, obviously, you know, that we're in a, um, uh, there's been a declaration of an emergency by the Governor. It is very likely that we will reimbursement for it. I think this was done sort of in an emergency, and I can certainly get you the answer for the next meeting, uh, to, if it's gonna be reimbursed or not. I think it's likely, but I don't, I don't want to go on record as saying yes for sure.
Oh, it would have to, it would have to have been done after the end of March, qualified.
The city has, the city has submitted, the city has applied for several grants and made several applications for COVID funds. I don't believe any of that money has been received yet, uh, but of course, the, as the Fire Chief indicated in his communication, he wanted to get ahead of this. So I would anticipate that, uh, this money and perhaps additional monies will be received by the city. I'm sure the, uh, Finance Chair can, uh, get you some additional information for the next meeting and for the entire Council.
I understand, it, it would have to have been started after March, the end of March is what I'm saying in order to qualify.
I understand. We'll, we'll get you the answers, Counsel Frida.
Yep, thank you.
Anything else?
Nope.
Okay, any, any other Counselor? Hearing none, uh, this will be by roll call, Counsel Frida?
Yay.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Yay.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Counselor Feckley?
Yay.
Counselor Angelini?
Yay.
Counselor Arndinger?
Yay.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Counselor David Cormier?
Yay.
And I shall be recorded as yay by a vote of nine to zero, C sixty-five is granted. Does the Chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President, ordered that the sum of seventy thousand dollars be appropriated to the Fire Department Capital Outlay Expense Account, the same amount to be transferred from the Stabilization Fund. Move for the adoption of the order.
Um, you've heard the request for the adoption of the order. This will be by roll call, Counsel Frida?
Yay.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Yay.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Counselor Feckley?
Yay.
Counselor Angelini?
Yay.
Counselor Arndinger?
Yay.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Counselor David Cormier?
Yay.
And I shall be recorded as yay. The order has been adopted by a nine to zero vote. Moving on to C sixty-six, I believe we have a second communication from the Mayor on C sixty-six, uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. President, C dash sixty-six, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests an appropriation of fifty thousand dollars be made to the city Solicitor Expense Account, the same amount to be transferred from the Stabilization Fund. I am going to ask, Mr. President, that we give this, uh, leave to withdraw without prejudice. We did, um, get a communication from the Mayor that he wishes to, uh, pull this, um, communication back. He indicated, I did speak to, uh, the Comptroller and, uh, to get, you know, to just get an understanding as to why. Um, originally, our expenses had been run pretty high, obviously for local here. Uh, part of that was for the rail trail, and the city did, uh, reimbursement, uh, there was a grant, and, and the city did get reimbursement back, so that money is now back, and, and, uh, the administration says that we are, we should be all set to get through the rest of the fiscal year, and they no longer need this communication to go through, uh, for that to happen, so it's asking that we give it leave to withdraw without prejudice. You can check with members of my committee.
Okay, uh, Counselor Pauline Cormier?
I would agree.
Counselor Angelini?
I'm also in agreement, Mr. President.
You've heard the EMS recommendation of the Finance Committee to give C sixty-six leave to withdraw without prejudice. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, this will be by roll call, Counsel Frida?
Yay.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Yay.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Counselor Feckley?
Yay.
Counselor Angelini?
Yay.
Counselor Arndinger?
Yay.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Counselor David Cormier?
Yay.
And I shall be recorded as yay by a vote of nine to zero. C sixty-six is given leave to withdraw without prejudice. Moving on to Public Service, in sixty-five dash twenty, is the Chairwoman ready to report?
I am, Mr. President, sixty-five dash twenty. Comcast of Massachusetts, Three Incorporated, request permission to install a new underground conduit system, Montezio Road, starting at utility pole number fourteen, excavating to place one four-inch PVC conduit, a hundred and seventy feet plus or minus, utility pole number thirteen. Um, there, we had a public hearing tonight, the committee had their opportunity to ask questions and, uh, get answers, and no one spoke from the public, so the recommendation would be to grant.
Um, I will poll your committee, Madam Chairwoman, Counselor Feckley?
I, I, yeah, yeah, I'll bet with that.
You're in, you're in support, Counselor Pauline Cormier?
I agree.
You've heard the EMS recommendation of the Public Service Committee to grant sixty-five dash twenty, is there any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, it's, uh, Counselor David Cormier.
Proceed.
Um, um, I just, I do need to say, um, this, this, this infrastructure is not being done by my employer, but it is being done by a director of them, and our code of conduct prohibits me from, uh, voting on this as an employee of, of a competitor of this company, so I will be.
Very well, your extension is noted. Any other discussion? Hearing none, this will be by roll call, Counsel Frida?
Yay.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Yay.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Counselor Feckley?
Yay.
Counselor Angelini?
Yay.
Counselor Arndinger?
Yay.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
And I shall be recorded as yay. Sixty-five dash twenty is granted by a vote of eight to zero. Moving on to new business. Counselor Cormier, David Cormier, do you have some hearings to establish, or subcommittee meetings to establish, rather?
I do, Mr. President, um, I'd like to, um, if you can, um, let me for a moment check with my committee, this is what I'm proposing, I just want to see if it's okay with Counselor Pauline Cormier and Counselor, uh, Arndinger, who are also on Finance.
Counselor Angelini, you mean?
Counselor Angelini, yeah.
Who did I say?
Counselor Arndinger.
Oh, I meant Counselor Angelini, sorry.
That's okay.
Thinking one person and saying another. Um, I spoke to, uh, John Richards today and asked, say, June fifteenth at six P.M. would be okay to present the budget to the Council? He indicated that would be fine, so I'm looking to start budget hearings on Monday, June fifteenth, have a presentation by the administration at six P.M., EPW at six fifteen, Fire Department six thirty, and Police Department at six forty-five. Does that Monday work for members of the Finance Committee?
Uh, Counselor Pauline Cormier, Monday is, the fifteenth is fine.
Uh, Mr. Mr. Chairman, the fifteenth works for me as well.
Okay, so, Madam Clerk, if you, you could post, um, the, those meetings, that would be great.
Okay, no problem.
And then, the other day, I was gonna give us a break on Tuesday, and then, Wednesday, June seventh, start with the library at six fifteen, and then have the school department, uh, down at six thirty, does that work with, uh, uh, other members of the Finance Committee?
Uh, Counselor Pauline. Uh, councillor Pauline Cormier, yes.
That was, uh, Mr. Chairman, that was library at six fifteen and school- school at six thirty, you said?
Yeah, so Wednesday, June seventeenth.
All right, that's fine with me.
Okay. Um, does the finance committee have any other departments that they want to hear from so that we can gather our information and make a recommendation to the city council?
Um, I would- that's what's- fine with me.
And I'll- I'll defer to the chair's discretion as well.
Okay. All right, so, uh, Madam Clerk, if you can post those meetings on seventeen. Also, Madam Clerk, uh, when I was the chair of finance, um, several years ago, I believe I did- I did the same thing and I'm gonna ask that we do it again. Um, if you could send an email to all department heads, ask them to review their budgets and if they have any concerns, be in contact with me, I will discuss with them if they feel they need to come down in front of the city council. Um, other than that, I think what we're doing is customary, but i- if anybody has any concerns, I'm willing to listen and work with them and, um, you know, we'll see what we can do to get them in front of us for a short time if they have any concerns.
No problem, I'll have that done first thing tomorrow morning.
Thank you very, very much.
Okay. Uh, anything else?
Mr. President, I have a question.
Yeah, councillor Frida?
Uh, yeah, uh, to the finance chair, uh, Tuesday night, um, I would highly recommend or request that we have at least the recreation department come down, they have a pretty sizable budget. I think we should be hearing what they've got to say.
Right, does the finance committee, is that okay to have the rec department down? We can start just fifteen minutes early. I know we've done them in the past and- and then there was a couple of years we didn't do them, but, you know, with everything going on this year and, uh, programs for the summer, if people- if people wanna have them down, uh, the finance committee wants to have them down to see what's gonna be, I'm- I'm open to that. It does affect a lot of residents in the community. We can have them- we can have them down at six o'clock, see if that's okay?
You're talking about on seventeen?
Yes, the seventeenth at- at six?
The rec department, yes.
Yeah, I think- I think that's actually a very good suggestion.
You all set with that, councillor Angelini, as well, through the chair?
That's- that's fine with me, and, uh, on what-
Madam Clerk, if you could add that one as well, at Wednesday at six?
Okay, no problem.
All right, any other questions on this? Councillor, um, councillor Cormier, do you have anything additional?
I believe, uh, I am all set.
Okay. I'm gonna- I'm gonna ask the Ways and Means Chair if she would be amenable or interested in having a special meet- having, uh, if we could establish a special meeting of the city council on June fifteenth, maybe at five forty-five?
That was actually one of my suggestions, yes, that was one of my suggestions.
And have the C D- yeah, excellent. We'll have the C D B G, uh, people down, have a public- have the public hearing at five forty-five and, um, as, uh, part of that meeting, in fact, we could, um, yeah, we'll have a special meeting, we'll have a hearing at five forty-five and hopefully we can resolve the C D B G budget that night.
Okay, so just make sure I'm-
That makes sense?
I just wanna make sure that's- yes, that makes sense, just wanna make sure that's okay with my committee, I'm assuming it would be, yeah.
Councillor Frida?
I'm good with that.
And councillor Dombrowski?
That's fine.
All right, so, um, that's where we'll establish the C D B G, establish a special meeting in the city council on June fifteenth, the only agenda item will be the C D B G, uh, communication and a public hearing, um, on that same- at that special meeting, uh, with it- with the matter on the agenda for action. Okay, uh, anything else on the new business?
Um, Mr. President, this is councillor Shalfo Zephyr.
Yes.
I believe this goes on the news. I just wanted to, uh, remind people that we have a public schools committee meeting on Wednesday, this Wednesday, June tenth, joint meeting with the, uh, school department, school committee, to really hear from the, uh, school administration about their fall reopening.
Very well, okay. Thank you for establishing that, councillor Shalfo Zephyr. Uh, we are all reminded of the, uh, subcommittee meeting on schools this Wednesday, um, at, um, six thirty P M. Okay.
Correct.
Um, there is nothing listed, um, on the old business, does anybody have any community calendar information?
I do, Mr. President.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead, councillor Frida.
I'm not sure, but I'm hoping that, uh, L A T V will be showing some of their archives. Uh, it is thirty years that we dedicated the Vietnam Veterans Memorial, um, downtown and it's since been moved to God Park, but it's, um, it was quite an event to have the families of the men that are on that, that, uh, wall, so hopefully someone will catch it. I've asked them to play it on, um, Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday. Uh, Tuesday, the sixteenth is the actual thirty-year anniversary. Because of everything that's been happening, obviously, we can't have much of a public issue, so, um, hopefully for now, it'll- it'll at least run on L A T V.
Well, that sounds like a fitting, uh, glad- glad you brought that up, that sounds very fitting. Okay, so members of the public can be on the lookout for that programming, which I'm sure would be very worthwhile. Anything else on the community calendar? Okay, we are adjourned, thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President, good night, everyone.
Good night, thank you all. Yep, stay well.